Good morning. Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners. It's the appointed directors meeting for Tuesday, August 13th, 2024. It's 11:04 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my left is Vice Chair, Commissioner Wayne Corneer, Commissioner Carolina Mihia, Commissioner Gary Edwards, and Commissioner Koss is on Zoom. We have many of our appointed directors, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, Assistant County Managers Josh Cummings and Rob Gilder. Public virtual attendance, is this a live stream?
It is.
Yes.
Okay, public virtual attendance on the Thurston County YouTube channel. Nothing on the agenda other than committee reports. Do we want to start with the other side of the table? Bruce, you want to start?
Hi, good morning, Commissioners. Bruce Raba, interim Central Services Director. Give a few updates. First of all, update from this morning. Legal has reviewed the resolution to move the 2025 purchase of the additional vehicles for the Sheriff's Office to 24. I'll be working with Assistant County Manager on getting them.
So it might show up on your work session tomorrow afternoon?
Good deal.
Thank you for the direction.
Thank you.
We can provide some more background now until then, just so you have all the details similar to what would go into an agenda item.
There's a charging station now on the side of the atrium that is for county vehicles. So it has a key, key access control, and Facilities is working on signage to identify that as a county vehicle spot.
What kind of a key issue? So county employees will just check out a key or what?
Oh, my gosh.
It's just a small, kind of like a slick key.
Only Facilities has access to those keys?
Fleet services.
Fleet services.
Fleet services and Facilities.
Can I plug my Mercury in there? I'm sure it'd be effective.
Well, I saw, I was saying I saw a Tesla parked out being plugged in, and I was like, I don't recall authorizing purchase of a Tesla for the county fleet, so I was wondering what was going on.
That might have been before the key access was installed?
Well, they wouldn't have been able to charge the key. The key access was integral into the installation.
So they thought they were charging and they weren't?
Possibly.
Somebody tried charging the electric Jeep in there. I don't know who that was. It didn't work out. I saw that too.
Have some good progress with some projects. The voter registration center was substantially completed in July, and the auditor was able to move in prior to the primary election. And then the PHSS Nurses Area Renovation Construction was completed in early August, and staff is currently moving back into that space. And the other thing from our project management team is there's a work session scheduled tomorrow has already discussed for a direction on the courthouse renovation.
Did you have an after action with the primary, with the auditor? I mean, were there issues that we thought we fixed but we didn't fix, or we created a different problem, that type of thing after the election? I mean, it kind of got that work done, it sounds like.
Yes.
Did everything work out as best is?
From what we know.
From what you know?
Yep. In regards to the essential services project.
Yeah, I mean, I haven't heard any different or anything. I just wondered. A lot of times when you start something new, you get a bug or two, you know?
Let us know if you do, though.
No, I haven't heard a thing. Thank you.
So the charging thing, I understand why the key would be put on there. Would the same logic be applied to the outlet that is around the corner that people are always plugging into from the public? I mean, it seems like the same argument would be made of, you know, no gift of public funds.
Yes. So Facilities is working on a way to secure the outlets. I'd have to get back to you on that status on that.
Thank you.
Public Health?
All right, Jen Frey, hi. Interim Director, Public Health and Social Services. Yes, thank you for all the work on the NFP area. We were very tight in space, and so this now allows a really open concept for meetings and collaborations. That's really exciting. We have seven open positions, and much of the rest of the report will be in the Board of Health packet tonight, things such as we're getting ready for the two upcoming immunization clinics, back-to-school immunization clinics. And the Board of Health subcommittees have been meeting, and so far I'm still acclimating to the interim director role.
If I could add something, Chair, I want to thank Rob and Jen for their work with Public Health Leadership Team. Rob personally met with all of the Public Health Leadership Team one-on-one, just to have an opportunity for them to connect with Rob as Assistant County Manager, to also share any perspectives they would have in a confidential setting. And so Rob is still putting together some things, but what he quickly did after, how many pages of notes, Rob?
Hundred and fifty-five.
Fifty-five pages of notes that he took from the team. He put them into kind of an organized train of thought into categories, and then did a, what is it called, a word?
Word cloud.
Word cloud. And I think that's important because...
So it shows things like different themes that came through.
That's important because as we look to continue to support Public Health and Social Services and a different leadership approach with, one of the things that came out on the word cloud was communication, the need for there to be more communication, and I know that's something that Rob and Jen are working through. But what I'm excited to see is that level of engagement from our leadership team, both Jen and Rob facilitating those conversations. That's really trying to look at not just what are some of the symptoms, but how do we help that team move forward? What are the resources that they may need so that we can continue to move in the right direction collectively as, not just them as a department, but then countywide? Rob, any thoughts you want to share?
No, but thank you. The only thing I would add is that my appreciation, sincere appreciation to Jen and her team, and actually to all of the executive and leadership team members for engaging in that process. But I am very thankful for Jen's smile. As we deal with any number of things, right, it's just attitude is everything, and she brings her best self to the conversation. So it's been great.
Our hands?
We're learning that Jen is pretty expressive.
I'm just trying to clarify this because my mind won't commute, compute this whole thing. How many pages of notes did you say?
So there's small notes, small pages. There are...
How many people did you meet with?
Over about forty individuals, and so average maybe four.
That's amazing. I have a hard time getting everything organized with five notes, you know, sometimes. So I'm impressed. Thank you.
To that extent, I mean, it was very clear that there were themes, right, that emerged in the conversation. As we work as part of a team, as part of a department, there's, you know, there's similarities in our experiences. And so it was just sussing those out. So...
Well, I, Rob and Jen, I really want to give you, I guess, my appreciation, right? Because when I first came in, and it was something I got worried about by Commissioner Mensah before coming in, was, you know, you will hear from Public Health employees, and, you know, through COVID, they were, you know, one of frontline staff, and they were out there, and leadership changes completely has just unbalanced them. So I'm sure they had a lot to say, right? Because I think it's just been years that they've been carrying with this, and they haven't felt heard. And so just thank you for allowing them that space to kind of just let it all out. And you see that in the 155 pages. That's pretty incredible, so.
Yeah, I think what they're effectively charting the course for, we really do appreciate Jen's leadership, which, learning that she has some specific professional expertise in like strategic planning and getting groups to move forward and different things is a change management process. And I appreciate Rob and Jen looking at what are the systemic things in organization? Because it's a group of people coming together. It doesn't mean anyone's doing anything particularly wrong. It's just how do we align the resources, the people, to get a better result? And I really appreciate the Public Health Leadership Team trusting Rob, trusting us, to come in and have candid conversations, because they could have decided just to have said nothing, but they gave him a lot of content and a lot of information that was constructive and helpful. So I think that that's something that we want to, you know, model in other areas of the county where there's change, and it's going to be tough for people. We had a recent team leadership meeting, and someone brought up the word, is there going to be grace as we look at how do we change course? And there absolutely is, because change is uneasy for folks. Even if it's for a really good reason, it's still hard. And so I think we're seeing that demonstrated in public health, demonstrated in the amount of time and energy it takes. Again, appreciate the work you're doing there.
I just feel like everything you said is accurate. But in public health, we have to remember that, just ask them to change leadership, you know. I mean, we didn't ask them. It was a situation we inherited, but we had a change of leadership like a year ago.
Exactly.
And I'm sure there was, you know, things going on and changes in play. And now our director resigned, and we're asking folks to engage again. And so I'm glad to hear what Rob's saying that staff is willing to do that, because, you know, we want to get it right and create durable, you know, stability. But it takes that input, because new folks come in, Jen, you know, whatever. You have to start from scratch. You don't have any choice. So thank you for taking on the task. All right, IT.
Sure. Look, IT Director, I want to talk about a few wins that we've had. Our scan numbers for long-distance dialing are gone. You can now direct dial from your phone for long distance, and that's a huge win for us. It'll save us money in the long run, and it saves administration time and tracking and those scan numbers. So that's a big one.
The eight and the nine.
Yeah, no more of that. Just dial nine.
It took me three years to figure that out.
I know. What a pain. It's gone. So you just direct dial now. Public Health and Social Services primary fiber is down again this morning, but nobody knows, because the Awesome Network team has worked for the last eighteen months to make sure we have redundant connections for every building, every critical building. It's not here, and you don't even know it. So I just, I just think they've done a great job in identifying ways to have redundant connections, and it doesn't keep us from working. So, what's that?
Well done.
Yes. We have an IT all-staff this Friday from 11:00 to 12:30, but Megan will be monitoring the phones, and will contact us if anything happens. So, not this Megan. We have a Megan who's leaving, and she's moving on to a different state, so she said she'd stick around and watch those. We've kicked off Axon for Public Defense and Prosecuting Attorney's Office, which makes them very happy. We have some demo equipment from Axon for the Sheriff's Office just to look at, to ask questions about, and to see if it would work. State Auditor's Office is here this week doing their assessment, our security assessment. Because we just had the CISA assessment, we're in a much better place for this particular assessment. We're going to be focusing a lot on processes and procedures instead of, they'll do a little bit of the knocking on our door to see if they can get in, but I think processes and procedures is really, a really good area for us to focus our security efforts on right now. We just found out last Friday that Rec Pro is being sunset at the end of 2025, so that's a new project we get to take on. It's used by Public Health and by Public Works. Yeah, so that's going to be a fun one. The permit project, we had our second data conversion completed, but there's still data missing, which means we need to go back and create some more custom fields. The data that's in Amanda has no place to land in the new permit tracking system, so we still have some work to do on that. Online inspection, scheduling, and automated fee updates are areas that are also causing delays in that project. But it's nothing unexpected, and it's nothing we can't work through. And then the TC Connect project, as everyone knows, is creating a lot of gray hair for some people. It's causing a lot of stress, but we are working through issues as they are popping up.
Yeah, I could add to that, Sheri.
Please.
The TC Connect project, as it relates to the functionality within the different interrelated systems, is having some major challenges. And so we are working with the Auditor's Office, and I really appreciate Mary, Diana, the new addition, Joe, and Darren. In addition to our financial teams, some are our departments, because a lot of them are lending their staff. Karen Weiss comes to mind to help out. But I think this is a learning opportunity for us, what we need as far as resources going into a major system migration, rather than try to get our staff who already have day jobs to do double duty, and then sometimes miss timelines, not because of any fault of their own, just because of the sheer amount of work. So I think it's an opportunity for us to look at how we, how we structure it differently. But currently, we are working in a coordinated approach with the Auditor's Team on addressing our support teams here at Cedar, and internally figuring out what do we need to do on a department level to get information entered, to get that tested. There's still very much a process of evaluating and assessing things. I say all that because it is causing some major impacts to operations, simple things, getting vendors paid for Jeff Gadman, getting information out to the junior taxing districts. We're aware of this, and our teams are communicating with some of our vendors about explaining that there's a delay. But can't be underestimated how much of a strain it is on all the leaders around here. It affects payroll. It affects departments that have complicated funding streams, like Public Works and Public Health, and the taxing that it's putting on their staff to manage these changes. And we find ourselves in a very trying situation right now. So what we're working our way through, there is really only one direction to go right now, since we're implemented, is through the other side of the tunnel. But I just wanted to make sure that the Commissioners knew that, because that is an unseen workload that's taking place for all of them right now. I think I would, without being overdramatic, I would say that it is wearing some of our team thin. And I know that in doing that, emotions can be high. So just to continue to send their appreciation, and we're trying to identify, Commissioners, are there additional resources that may be needed to get some of the backlog work, especially data entry, up and into the system, so that we have the right information by which then to process and troubleshoot? I think that we can make progress in this area, but it is a very challenging time, because it affects our major financial systems. And the work that we do has gotten harder, not easier, which is normal in a transition, but the amount of issues we're having is a concern for leadership, which it should be. So I don't know if there's any questions or anything the team would like to add on that. But from my standpoint, I want to thank you for your hard work, dedication, because I know Public Works, Public Health, and other departments that have funding issues, HR is being impacted. You know, everyone has, is touching this. Contracts are a problem as well, so we're working through it.
Thank you, Leonard, for bringing that up, because that was actually one of the questions I wanted to ask today was like, how's TC Connect going for each of your departments? What are the impacts that you're feeling, right? And kind of what is, what is the reality of it? I think, you know, I hear rumblings about it, but knowing how it's impacting your workload, it's something I think I wanted to hear from you all today. So thank you for bringing that up. So I think as we move forward, if everyone can just kind of give an update on that, and then we can circle back with Bruce and Jen. It's okay.
Great idea.
So there are two items that I was planning to share with the board. The first has to do with IT stats for the department. So Public Works is 220-person department. Year-to-date, we have filled 50 positions. Twenty-nine of those are new hires from the outside, and 21 of those are promotions. So we're looking at a 42% internal promotion rate. Of our separations, we've had 25. 24% of those are retirements. And we have an event planned with the Sheriff's Office. This is a trail safety event. It's scheduled for August 25th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. in the South Sound Center parking lot adjacent to the Shaheles Western Trail. And so Public Works staff will be there to talk about trail etiquette. And Sheriff's Office, a deputy will be there to talk about just personal safety when using the trail. TC Connect, I think that, I think that the County Manager summed it up really well. We, on these larger implementations of software, large software implementations, we're going to go slow to go faster later. I think that we're struggling with the data, so it's a new system, so you don't know if you're just not doing it right, or if it's a system issue. And I think we just didn't have time to develop the new workflows that we need to have in place for the new system. So recruitment is one of them. We were locked in with NeoGov. We got to figure that out for the new system. And so we're still in the assessment period, but just our workflows are not, are not in place for, for the various elements of the work that we do with TC Connect. But we knew that. We knew we didn't have enough time, and that's kind of where we are. And so I think, as the County Manager said, we have nowhere to go but forward. So we will, we will figure it out. And we have great people working on it, so.
Yeah, I would say we have fantastic people working on it. But I think just understand that what was pretty easy for us to do previously, for the next several weeks to months, it's a little bit more complicated. And sometimes we have to trailblaze a new path in the workflow and work to figure out how urgent are things so that we can triage them and bring them forward if we have to identify, oh, gosh, we need some extra support to get that done.
Can I just thank you about the trail safety event?
Yeah.
I know we've heard many constituents, we've heard the bikers versus walkers kind of debate that happens. And so I'm really excited about this event and kind of seeing how it turns out. And so thank you for putting that on.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's the first one that we're doing, but we hope to do more and maybe move it around the county as well, so.
Can you repeat? Was there a date that you gave?
August 25th. Ten to two.
Ten to two, and I caught the location. And that's a, is that a weekend?
It's a Sunday.
Sunday, yeah.
Okay, Maria Ponta, HR Director. So just on the, continuing the discussion around TC Connect, just speaking for HR only, I don't think we understood the intensity of the work and the workload. We were fortunate that we did get a temporary person that understood the behind-the-scenes payroll, that helped with a lot of that configuration. But our regular workload didn't go away. It continued to increase, and so this has just created another level of stress and, you know, worry about missing deadlines and things like that. So a lot of lessons learned there, and we're trying to figure it out. We're just asking for patience as we go through the process. And I also want to add, although I had staff that was part of configuring, they're still learning, and a lot of us don't know the system. So there's a level of frustration when they're asking HR questions. Well, we're learning ourselves too, so we're, we are kind of hamstrung in that sense. So unless you have other questions around that, you got a little brief update on HR projects. We're looking at reclassifications, our process updating policy. We're also getting closer to bringing forward policy changes around compensation and things that will provide more tools to hiring managers in terms of being able to offer higher than step one without going through a certain approval process. That will help speed things up. We're bargaining with the uniformed in the Sheriff's Office. Really, just lots and lots of, lots and lots of work. That's about all. That's the best way to describe it. Lots of opportunities. Okay.
I guess before, before HR gets off the hot seat there, and we mentioned it earlier in one of our meetings, that's an understatement. You guys have your hands full. You're doing super. Thank you.
Thank you. And some of my staff heard the appreciation, and so just acknowledging that goes a long, a long way, right? We don't have to do extraordinary things to just thank staff, so. So hearing it from you is really... I'm grateful for that, so thank you.
Ashley Rye, interim Director of Community Planning, Economic Development, about two weeks in. So Grace was mentioned. I asked for your grace in these updates. I'll start by saying we just hosted Fair, and it was exciting. And we hope to have, like, the numbers to you very soon this week. I know Thomas and Noah was trying really hard before the amount of vacation to pull those together. But I know it's in the range of between 18,000 and 19,000 folks that came. We couldn't have done it without all the people around the table here. I mean, those were scrummy pancakes, so thanks to the Commissioners. And thanks to Megan's team, especially for providing all that PIO support. Can't wait to watch those videos that just went out. In terms of other things coming up, we have been trying to support Commissioner Mensah and then trying to brief other Commissioners about the upcoming Urban Growth Management Subcommittee meeting, which is occurring next Monday. And that is an opportunity for the county to have a discussion about updating countywide planning policies as it relates to a project that was placed on CPED's work plan, the bar holdings one. So I know that's of interest to a lot of you, and we'll just continue to keep you updated. Another thing that we hope to bring back is the Conservation Futures Grant Award Program. We had a briefing about a week and a half ago. We have since met with the budget team and leadership team and should have a staff recommendation here within the next week or two and an agenda setting or Commissioner check-in. And I will leave it at that. I'm just happy to answer questions. I guess as it pertains, sorry, TC Connect. From CPED's perspective, just looking around the table because I think there's been tremendous support from IT and HR. As we've had questions emerge, the level of effort that your departments have put in to respond to those questions as quickly as possible and to do it in a kind, considerate way. So thank you for that. I know for recruitment and in terms of what it's done to our workload, right now we're just doing a lot of duplicate processing. We're nervous about the new system, so we're making sure that we're duplicating wherever we can. And that provides just kind of a backstop and a resource if we're looking at checking to make sure everything's okay.
Perfect. I'll jump into a couple different topics. We are still working on our comprehensive emergency management plan as we go through all the annexes and update that. So as we go throughout the year, you're going to be seeing the comprehensive emergency management plan presented to you probably later this year, if not early next year. Additionally, we are, as of September 3rd of this year, will be fully staffed at Medic One. That's something that we've struggled with for a number of months, years. We're not quite at September 3rd, so I'll read you that. But we're starting a new program. So it's not only a replacement of staff, but expanding into a quality improvement program. So not only how are we looking at how we're functioning from a medical side, but how do we continuously improve? So putting a CQI position into place. So that's pretty exciting. We've also been able to coordinate with Public Health. So what came out of the Board of Health meeting back in April were a number of different initiatives. I can happily report that our medical program director has approved three of those protocols that we have been discussing, whether it's BLS, Narcan, Leave Behind Narcan, or Suboxone. We do have protocols approved and created, not approved by the state, but approved by the MPD. They're going through our equipment process and training components so that we can train those effectively. They'll be presented to the state in October. And so we're meeting our deadlines that we had discussed at the Board of Health meeting for implementation in April 2025. With that, we're really excited with the coordination that we've had with Public Health and Kitty Strozek involved in that initiative to make sure that what we're doing is in lockstep with Public Health, which is something that came out of that discussion. And so I just wanted to make sure that we were reporting that out. And lastly, the 50th anniversary of Medic One was officially August 4th, just a few days ago. So in 1974, August 4th is when Medic One was founded. We're going into the celebratory phase of our 50th anniversary, and more to come on that. But September 28th, which will be... All of you will be invited to, will be our 50th anniversary gala. And so invitations will be coming out at the end of this week.
What's your location?
It's going to be at Indian Summit.
Questions for Ben? Nope. Oh, yep.
CQI.
Continuous Quality Improvement.
All right, good morning, everyone. Sheri Henin, Pre-Trial Services. I'll hit a couple highlights as well. Two exciting things from the Resource Hub. So one, as of August, we are open more hours. So now open Monday through Thursday, 10 to 4, which is great. And then later this week, hopefully many of you have heard publicity on this. We're having a big community resource fair Thursday, the 15th, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. in various parking lots over there on the Courthouse campus, the parking lots between buildings four, six, and seven, basically, will be full of community providers of all sorts, state agencies, DJ, hot dogs, other food, dog groomers, hepatitis, C testing. The list goes on and on and on. So stop by if you can. We're really excited for that. Getting a lot of interest from a lot of different types of providers. So hopefully we'll be well attended, so that'll be fun. Looking at... So our APPR project is sort of winding down throughout 2024. The State Administrative Office of the Courts issued a notice of funding availability a couple months ago. We submitted an application asking for small amount of funding to sort of sustain a bit of the data support that we've been getting through APPR. And I just got an award letter that we have been awarded a bit of funding, less than what we asked for, but money is always good. So about $18,000. It won't go very far, but it's a little bit of money to continue our data work. And what's exciting about it to me is really... This is one of the rare or first times that the state has done anything related to pre-trial services at all. So I think the opportunity to work with AOC, to work with other jurisdictions across the state on pre-trial matters is as exciting as the $18,000 is. So I'm excited about that. We are, of course, following the discussions about different options for the courthouse remodel. Very excited about the most recent ideas that have been presented with respect to the interim tentative plans, both on behalf of kind of potential hub space and potential pre-trial space. So excited about where that could possibly lead, depending on the Board's decisions. And I just noticed on my calendar that the next time this group meets is a date. So the National Association of Pre-Trial Service Agencies Conference is in September, so I'll be presenting related to our county's work as a APPR research action site. Our program manager, Lisa Jackson, is attending. And then related to that state funding opportunity for pre-trial services, we also got an even tinier amount of money from the state to send Judge Schaller to that conference as well. So it'll be great to have a Superior Court Judicial Officer there as well. So I want to see you at this meeting next month. We'll be in New Orleans for pre-trial discussions.
What was the date for your gala up at the courthouse?
Thursday.
The gala would be...
It sounded like...
Hot dogs for all. Great gala. August 15th, this Thursday, from 11:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Sheri, am I remembering from back to the beginning of APPR, there was like five jurisdictions that got the initial grant? I think two of them were in Washington. Was the other one Pierce County?
Correct, yes.
So do we know how Pierce County's journey has been? And is it similar to ours? Or I haven't heard anything about that.
Yeah, no. I talk to them all the time, partly because Nicole Carbone, who used to work here in Thurston County, is now leading their work. So we coordinate regularly, which has been great. And we've been able to collaborate directly on some data projects, et cetera. They implemented the public safety assessment about a year before we did. So they have a little bit more experience under their belt. They have some pretty significant capacity issues in their jurisdiction, so they've been grappling with that. And I think a lot of similar experiences. I will say one thing that stands out in Thurston County is the level of engagement across all the different criminal justice stakeholders that we, on an ongoing basis, we really do have both courts, the prosecutor, public defense, and a range of law enforcement agencies at the table. That does not mean we always agree on everything and we're see everything the same, but we are having productive, meaningful conversations. And I don't think that's quite as true in all the other jurisdictions, including Pierce has struggled a bit with engaging all partners all the time. But we do talk to them regularly and have some similar experiences, for sure.
Okay, thank you.
And they'll be presenting at NAPSA as well. So Thurston, Pierce, Alaski County, Arkansas, and Fulton County, Georgia are the research action sites.
All right, Commissioners, anything to report back? Assistant County Managers, yeah?
I could just speak to TC Connect. It'd be a mess if we didn't.
Yeah, sorry. Let you guys go back and double back to our first two. C Connect.
So staffing challenges in central services exacerbate the issues that have already been brought forward. But a thank you to the Auditor's Office for providing some support to help us keep up with daily workload. But it's definitely stretching the staff.
I just wanted to add, on the hiring side, as some of you remember, we completely revamped our hiring process last September. And so this obviously presents a whole new... Having to re-go through and figure out what our hiring process is. There were checks and balances in NeoGov that don't exist in TC Connect, so we're having to build those. But thanks to Wayne for helping us troubleshoot and walk through those as they're learning as well, too. So on the payroll side, I just have to really thank Tara and Amy and Dawn because they have been really helping on the payroll side. We are still doing every single staff duplicate entry. We have a payroll system as well, too, because the coding isn't set up and we will have to do a lot of data entry for all of these pay periods on the backend to get those coded to the right grants because we, I believe we are approximately 88% grant-funded. So it just presents all of those challenges there. So we're still dual-time card. And then, yes, we've had several issues with vendors not wanting to work with us because we haven't been able to pay or, you know, we've had the team helping and working on those who are close to eviction and those sorts of issues. But I have to give a massive shout-out to our fiscal team because they are pulling long hours, doing so much work. It's been very, very, very stressful. And that's where, thanks for all the extra support and the teamwork to help get us to where we need to be as we're plunking along and moving forward on it.
Anything else? I thought you had your hand raised.
No, I didn't.
Are we getting close to winding down? Is that what I'm hearing? We have 15 minutes if we need it, but if we're at the end of the agenda, we can adjourn.
You know, I'd just like to say that we're going through quite a bit, and we just appreciate all the support. I guess I'll just let it go at that.
Grace is the word of the day. It goes all the way around the table, hopefully. So thank you, guys.
Ben had his sample.
I did just want to echo... I didn't share anything about TC Connect. I just wanted to echo that I really want to lift up our fiscal support teams. I think they've been through a lot, to say the least, over the last several months. And so I'm very proud of all the teams we've worked with. They've been there to help. They've been there to support and not be a barrier. And so that's been fantastic, to be able to work with them. I think on a separate, more fun note, I did forget one thing that's actually a big shift here in the atrium. Medic One is actually going to be hosting their EMT class for the first time here in the atrium in the training room.